At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start with our invocation by Supervisor Mike Carter, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Tommy Cundiff. So if you will, all stand, please.
Great seeing everybody today. I'd like to wish you a happy Easter. And my prayer today is in reference to Easter, which will be this Sunday. Let us pray. May the glory and promise of this joyous time of year bring peace and happiness to you and those you hold most dear. And may Christ, our rising Savior, always be there by your side to bless you most abundantly and be your loving God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we get into the tax levies and the budget section, Supervisor Ronnie Thompson is not with us today due to some medical issues. And he has asked to be allowed to vote by phone. So at this time, I will open the floor for a motion to allow that to happen.
Mr. Chairman, I will offer a motion that the Board of Supervisors allow Mr. Ronnie Thompson to join our board meeting via telephone communication today.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we take a vote? Seeing none, you need a voice or call?
Voice vote.
Okay. All in favor of allowing Supervisor Ronnie Thompson to take part by phone? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. None opposed. So if you want to go ahead and... Actually, he asked that... Well, go ahead and make the call, because he may have something he wants to say on the tax levies part.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to say, is this an omen that we're having this kind of rain on Budget Adoption Day?
Well, when it rains, it pours, that's for sure.
Yeah.
But again, I'd like to welcome everyone here today. And first line of... Next line of business, we're going to discuss the setting of tax year 2023 tax levies. I'm going to ask Mike Carter... I mean, not Mike Carter, Brian Carter, if you will, come up. Mike, you stay where you're at. And too many Carters and Mitchells around here, it gets your tongue tied.
Should I be scared?
Well, me and you are.
Yes, Ms. Cundiff, I have nothing prepared. And so I do want to point out that myself and Mr. Mike Carter are not related.
Okay.
And so we didn't plan that either.
Well, basically, what I wanted you, in case someone had a question in regard to the tax levies that we have set, the tax rates, as we discussed at the public hearing last week, there are no changes, there are no increases to the levies and taxes.
Right.
Anyone have any questions or anything they'd like to ask Mr. Carter about the tax levies and tax rates at this time?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I know... How much can we raise the taxes without having a public hearing?
Well, at this point, tax rates have been advertised, and the public hearing has been held, so we can't raise them at all at this point without...
Without having another public hearing, correct?
Yes, sir.
So what I really want to drill home today really requires a tax increase, and I'd like to have further discussion on it to... You said a one cent real estate tax increase is about $750,000, correct?
Correct, yes.
That's the exact amount of money that I would like proposed in next year's budget. So I'd be willing to come back for another public hearing to do that, to fund SROs for all the schools in this county.
Okay.
And if it's at the Board's pleasure, if not, then I'll just talk about it when we get to the budget.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay, if there's no other discussion at this time, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little bit confused. Yeah. If there's going to be a proposal to incre... Are we going to vote or table this stuff, given Mr. Mitchell's request?
Let's propose the board's.
I'm going to ask for any way I can possibly get it. So if you don't want to do it this way, I'll just ask for it later in the meeting. It's up to y'all.
Want to vote on the proposed levies as presented?
Yes, I'll make a motion if we vote on a proposed budget.
Okay. We have a motion to vote on the proposed levies as presented?
Now, this is straight budget we're talking about.
This is the...
This is attached levy.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, yes, I'll make a motion if we vote on a budget.
Okay. Do we have a second?
For the tax levies.
Okay, we have a...
Yeah, tax levies, because he keeps saying budget.
He said budget.
This is the tax levies and the taxes. This is not the budget. This is the tax rates.
They remain the same.
They remain the same.
All right, I want to make sure.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the tax levies and tax rates as proposed. Any further discussion before we take a final vote? Okay, seeing none, you need a roll call on this, right?
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
No.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Thompson is absent for the vote.
Okay. And next on the agenda is the adoption of the fiscal year 2023, 2024 county budget. Yes?
Mr. Thompson just advised he is able to take the call now.
Okay, can you take the call? Yeah, try the call again, please.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I just want to convey a lot of gratitude to staff, Mr. Carter, his office, Mr. Whitlow, and the administrative staff for bringing us the budget that you were able to craft in very stringent circumstances. I did not expect that was possible, but our county is managed in an exemplary way. And when this kind of situation occurs and we've got a balanced budget, I just... And I know this board commends all of you for that.
Might be having some technical issues. Can I take a flat... Can we take a... Just a couple-minute break to get him on the line?
Yes. We'll take five minutes and give Madeline a chance to get Mr. Thompson on the line. Meeting here and try to take care of this, and we'll do the best we can with Ronnie. We hate that he's not here, but sometimes technology lets us down. Okay, at this time, we're going to take a vote on the adoption of the county budget. Board, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we adopt the 2023-24 budget as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a few things to say before we jump right into it.
Okay, I have a motion right now, so let me... I've got to deal with that, and then we'll come back to you when I get to discussion.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the presented county budget. Now I can open the floor for discussion.
All right, appreciate it. Just a couple of things before I get into my SRO discussion. On the public safety side of things, I can't support the budget, number one. Our Fire Marshal has expressed his concerns with his staffing, specifically with the Animal Control Division. And I would have... I wanted to see another position there. Callaway Rescue Squad, I'm pretty disappointed in myself for not catching it at first. But I'm furthermore disappointed that my volunteers at the Callaway Squad found that their budget had been cut $17,500, and nobody from county staff even called to talk to them about it. They lost a great member that was there to answer a lot of calls last year, a great citizen to the Callaway area. I know that they're still operating. I know they're not answering as many calls as they would. But instead of cutting their budget, why didn't this county reach out to them and see what they might need to get back to answering the call volume that they once did? And for them to find out the way they found was no communication to me is unacceptable. It's preached to me not to let the county staff run the departments, let the county staff run the departments, and then I get the phone calls. And it pisses me off to no end that it goes that way. There's a lot of lack of communication in this county. I want their money put back in, and I want county staff to ask them what they need and assist them. Public safety was created to assist our volunteers. We need to figure out what we need to do to assist them, to get them back on track. I want that money put back in. Furthermore, county staff, if you're going to cut something... You guys know how passionate I am about public safety. Why would y'all not even talk to me about it when you're working on the budget?
Okay.
That pisses me off.
Let me give you a...
I want their money put back in. I want it put back in tonight. I don't care how we do it, I want it put back in. I want us to get with them and figure out what we got to do to get them to answering a higher percentage of their calls. They answered 10% of their calls last year. That's 10% that public safety didn't have to answer on a $24,000 budget. That's all they get. And we're going to cut them, so they still get $7,500. So correct me if I'm wrong, the squads that are...
We can hear you.
Still operating, volunteer squads are still operating, they get their full funding of $24,000, correct? So the $7,500 is for the squads for building maintenance, to have paid staff in them. So are we putting paid staff in the Callaway Rescue Squad? We have had no discussion on it. So what's that $7,500 for? We have $140,000 for promoting volunteerism in this county. What's that money spent on? Is that all stipends, Brian?
Mostly, if I understand the line item, yes, that's mostly stipends.
I don't care what anybody says in this county. We have a good public safety department, all right? But the volunteers are a vital, vital part of this county. What Red Valley Rescue Squad's doing is unbelievable. If they can do it, the other squads can do it. And public safety is getting busier. Director Ferguson has showed us every year, they're getting busier and busier, they're answering more and more calls. We need to get behind our volunteers on the fire and EMS side and support them. You guys talk about not wanting to raise taxes, keep running the volunteers out. I'm telling you right now, you don't put their money back in, Callaway Rescue Squad, you're going to piss them off so bad, they're not going to run calls. And I don't blame them. I wouldn't either. You will cut my funding, I'm not going to answer calls. That's all I got to say about that. SROs. Everybody see what happened in Tennessee last week? I asked for the video from the body cams on the officers to be played in the meeting today to show you guys the trauma that these children have to go through. I've been preaching for three years, "Oh, our schools are secure, our schools are..." What did that shooter do? Doors were locked. What did she do? She shot through them. You think for one second that it's not going to happen here? You're a damn fool. This board owes it to every parent in this county that when they say goodbye... When they say goodbye in the morning, they need to know that their kids, my wife, are protected. And goddammit, enough's enough! This board needs to put the money in the budget tonight, tonight, to protect them. Our schools are getting targeted by these idiots out here. It's going to be a statistic before long that working in a school is going to become one of the most dangerous places to work, if it's not already. Our children have anxiety about going to school. Unacceptable. Our children and the people working in these schools need to know that there's somebody there to meet that force with lethal force. It's the only way you're going to stop it. An SRO at that school could have met that piece of crap and slowed them down or eliminated them enough. Those officers were there within a few minutes. I wanted you guys to see that video to show how important it was, how those officers worked through that school. Our sheriff's office trains on the same thing, to go through these schools, find the threat, and eliminate it. Split second, that's why I wanted you guys to watch the video before we voted on the budget, so you can see how important it is for the lethal force that is needed to meet the threat as soon as it arises. Enough's enough. We're flirting with danger. You think, what are we going to do when the national media shows up? We're going to look like damn fools as we're being interviewed. We got $50 million sitting in the bank. $750,000, $760,000 is what it takes to have an SRO in every school in this county. That's one cent, right, Mr. Carter? If this board needs to raise that one cent to pay for it, so be it. You can blame me, I don't care. Our children in school and the staff in schools have to practice lockdown drills for active shooters. What good does it do if we don't have somebody there to eliminate it? They're sitting ducks. Credit me from all, Major Sigmund, the lockdown drills, they lock themselves in the rooms. Okay, that's great until the active shooter gets to that classroom like it did in Texas, cuts through the damn door, and shoots up the whole damn classroom. We owe it. You owe it to me, that when I kiss my little girl and my wife every morning, do the right thing, you're flirting with fire. It's going to happen. It's happened more and more. And in case you guys aren't paying attention to what's going on out there in the real world, it's not getting any better. It's not getting any better. I'm tired of it. I've been talking about this ever since I got on the board, right, Ms. Smith? Third month into my term here, I talked about this. We got six last year. So we have an officer that goes to Glade Hill in the morning and Dudley in the afternoon. Well, what damn good does that do if the shooter goes to Glade Hill in the afternoon? That officer has to drive like hell back to that school, five, 10 minutes? How many lives are lost in that short amount of timeframe? Our schools are getting targeted, and enough's enough. I don't care how we pay for it. All this money we got sitting in the bank, that budget book means shit to me. I'm sorry, Brian. There's nothing in that book that we spend money on that's more important than protecting the children. What do you do every morning, Brian? You could upput your pencil just like I do. You're going out to provide for your family, right? So am I. I have to think about my wife and daughter getting shot every day. The children are anxious. The anxiety and depression for children going to school these days is overwhelming. Look into it. You talk about the 1,500 kids that we've lost in the school system and ADM. You think for one second that's not because the parents and the kids are afraid of getting shot at school? I do. I've thought about not letting my wife teach at school. I've thought about not letting my girl go to public school. She's safe at my house. I asked Mr. Whitlow earlier in the week what we spend to have manned dumpster sites in this county. The salaries, just the salaries, $365,000 a year. We spend $365,000 a year to protect our damn trash. Put that in your pipe and smoke. What fucking sense does that make? Enough is enough. Protect our ch... Henry Kelly just did it, did he not, Major Sigmund? That board stepped up to the plate, gave them the money. And I'm not talking about next fiscal year, I'm talking about tomorrow morning. Overtime money, whatever we need to do to put protection in place in our school systems. I want it tonight, I want it implemented tomorrow morning. Enough's enough. I won't vote to spend one red cent until I get it. This is my last budget, Mr. Carter. What pocket of money should I make a motion to take it out of? The $21.5 million we got sitting in the bank gaining interest? Screw that interest. What good does that do? We lose one child. What's that one child's life worth? What's it worth to y'all? Is it worth $21.5 million? Nah. It's irreplaceable. We got a reassessment next year. You think for one second that the value of these homes isn't going to be high enough to where we got enough money to pay it? You're crazy. Make it happen. $750,000 for salaries for the eight SROs, and from what I understand, we need a few hundred thousand dollars more to buy all the equipment that they need to make it happen. $1.2 million is my motion to come out of the pocket of money that we have sitting in that $21.5 million budget, in that $21.5 million account. I make a motion tonight to put in effect immediately $1.2 million towards SROs. That's my motion.
Okay, we have another motion already that we have to take care of before we can get to that motion.
That's why I wanted to talk before we made a motion to approve the budget. So, Mr. Cundiff, you want to withdraw your motion?
No, sir.
All right.
And I tell you, the reason I won't withdraw it, because we're already working on this problem.
No, we're not. We have to apply for a grant, what if we don't get it?
I'm not going to argue with you. I'm telling you, we've talked to the sheriff, we're waiting on a grant, and that's just the way I see it.
We have... If there's no other discussion on this matter, we'll take a vote. We have a motion and a second to approve the 2023-2024 county budget. Madam Clerk, take a roll call, please.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
No.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Thompson is absent for the vote.
Next order of business, we're going to get into other matters. And as requested by Supervisor Ronald Mitchell, he's requested that we watch the video of the body cam footage from Nashville. Sheriff, if you will, come up front, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask clarification of what the sheriff has found out about for us about this.
That's why I ask him to come up. If you can update us on the status of the grant, and also if you can give us an idea of what it would cost and it took in order of overtime money or whatever we need to do to put officers in schools.
Well, I want to thank you all. We did proceed with the grant. It's been filed. We're looking for a response from them. May will be their next meeting date, so we're hoping certainly that we will be approved for the eight that we applied for, but it could be anywhere from eight to one, or zero. But that's as far as the grant process has gotten. I'll have to say that, Mr. Carter, I'll have to get the information, but gave us a complete cost analysis for moving forward over the next four, three and four years of the current grants that we do have and the addition of this grant. I'll have to say, I haven't looked over it enough to exactly know what those numbers were from the last time we presented here. But we're still looking at, I believe, we're around a cost that I think I would, if I quoted you, 1.2 to 1.3 million. Now, that did not take in effect, you know, the cost for the equipment, then thinking about inflationary cost, thinking about the potential cost of living cost that could occur. So I believe from his calculations, that number certainly grew, but we were looking at the 1.2 to 1.3 million. Now, that's a little bit... I just want you all to understand, when we were figuring that, we don't know when we hire somebody, certainly we've got a couple already that are in our schools now that came from other agencies. And we had to look at the pay scale and where they fit on the pay scale. Our numbers could be high, they could be lower. Certainly, as we start to implement the grant, if you all approve it, as we are able to get officers in those schools, the cost may not reach that number in the first year. I do know this particular grant starts when the grant cycle would begin, I guess, July 1st. They waived that last year. We had to pay no upfront for the whole 12 months. But for this next one, the matching fund does start when that particular grant starts for those particular eight, if we were to get the full eight. Understanding, too, we were talking about two that you all approved four years ago, that grant is about to end. So that would be... The county would have to assume those positions full-time for those particular two. And the six that we just... You just approved, they are in that cycle. And this upcoming budget cycle would be the first time we would have to pay our 40% match for those particular six.
Okay, how much is the 40% match that we have to come up with?
Do you have that number? I'm sorry.
Eight or six?
On what you've... And the grant, if you get all eight, what would our match be?
It's roughly $305,000, 44... 48. For the eight only.
305, okay.
For the eight, the new one?
Yes.
The six that we already currently have was like, what, $160-some thousand, maybe? Our share, 40%, or is it more than that? Maybe two-something?
Mr. Cundiff, you had a question?
Oh, the grant, the ones we have, you said running out when?
We currently have eight SROs. Two, we've had them in place for, this is the end in the fourth year.
Okay.
So in the next budget cycle, the county will have to pick up the full cost of those two.
What's the full cost?
I think that was $144...
$142.
$142.
Sir?
$142.
$142.
Right. Then we have the six that the money was waived for the first year, the '22-'23 cycle. We'll have to start paying on those six this current upcoming budget, '23 and '24. We'll have to cover the cost of those, the 40% match for those six.
Now, what's the cost of the six?
$224,000.
$224,000.
Okay. Now, I know we have a private school in Frank County, but these people pay taxes, too. So I would like to also figure in a policeman for Christian Heritage, because these people pay taxes just like anybody else. And yes, I agree with Mr. Mitchell. I think our children should be looked after, our teachers should be looked after. But we've got a process going, and, you know, I have all confidence in the world, we can get one in every school. But if we can't, then I will try my best to help get one in every school. But we have a process we go through to do this. And, you know, like I said, our children are valuable, there's no doubt about it. But also, in our county, we have things that we have to go process through to get to this. And so with that being said, you know, like I said, I think Christian Heritage should have one, I think all schools should have one. Let's get our money lined up and get it where it should be. We need to go through the process to get it done, and it won't take that long to do it. So, but anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sheriff, I hate to put you on the spot, but if... Do you have the manpower? If we could give you overtime money to pay the overtime, to fund, to staff these schools for the rest of the school year, do you have the manpower to be able to cover that? I mean, give them the money is one thing, but if you don't have the manpower to do it, we haven't... Really haven't solved anything.
Right.
Do you... And could you give me a rough idea from now until the end of May, what it would cost to have an extra, an officer in the schools? You know, if we can get them, whether it's four, five, six, whatever we can get for the rest of the school year, and then... You know, if we can get them, whether it's four, five, six, whatever we can get for the rest of this school year, and then we can go from there?
Speaking from the heart and, and just being as candid as I can, I do not have the personnel to do that. But let me say this. Understanding what we witnessed a week ago and agreeing with what Mr. Mitchell said about the vulnerability, I, I don't know all the details. It was told to me that they're looking into it, that this particular shooter may have gone to other schools prior to this school or had looked at other schools and, and don't know, because I haven't seen the memoirs. But it was suggested chose this school because it did not have an SRO in this particular school. But I will have to say with the urgency we're now under, and if, if I have come to this podium and spoke honestly about how caring and concerned we are, and I think everybody in the, the, are without doing away with the basic services responsibilities we have, we will try our best to get part-time personnel, maybe even have to shift some duties to help us cover these schools. In particular, in this particular timeframe we're in, there is so much stress out there right now. And it's the upheaval in so many arenas and areas of people's lives and their ideology and thinking. It, it's really concerning to me, and I know it is to you all. But, but we are going to look at how we can do our very best to cover as many schools until, until we could get those permanent people in there. It will be, it's going to be a yeoman's task for us to do it. And I always have to be aware of, and when we're doing things, are we depleting? Always thinking about the safety of our men and women who are working each day and night just to do the normal things that we're tasked with doing. But understanding too, that without all of a sudden taking away services that the, the community is expecting. But I do believe right now that there's no higher importance than people would say that they believe the protection of these schools right now, because it certainly is something that they are, again, it, it set us back after the events of last week, for sure.
And I agree with Mr. Cundiff. Christian Heritage Academy is a private school, and there's also Smith Mountain Lake Academy down at Hales Ford area. They are, they are private schools, but, you know, those people pay taxes, and they're our citizens, and whether, whether it's public or private, we owe it to protect those children. So, I'd like to see them included. I know it's, it's going to be a challenge for you because of manpower and everything. If you can just do your best to cover the schools, and in the meantime, get with staff, with Mr. Carter, Mr. Whitlow, and see if we can come up with a plan to get us to have, to present at our next board meeting. To have a plan to get through the rest of this school year. And in the meantime, we need to be working diligently on a long-term plan. As I told you yesterday, whatever we do, I want to make sure we do it right. And, you know, if we start just trying to throw, we can throw a bunch of money at it, but if you don't have the people to cover it, that's not going to solve it. So, you know, it's going to take all of us working together on this. So, if we can do short-term, the best you can do with, with the limited resources you have. But in the meantime, if we can get with staff and try to come up with a proposal, go ahead, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff, do you have a, a working rapport with the town of Rocky Mount Police Department that perhaps they could step up to the plate and, and help you with some of this until we can resolve the problem?
We certainly have a good relationship with them. They currently have two dedicated officers, one at the middle school and one at the high school. There was some discussion initially, this been weeks ago, about their thoughts of whether they would entertain applying for the grant to maybe look at Liam Wade and Rocky Mount Elementary. I didn't get the impression at that time that they were going to proceed. I believe that the thought process were that these were county schools, they were owned and operated through the county, and that that's was not going to be a venue that they were going to explore.
Okay.
But they do have one at the middle school and one at the high school.
Following Mr. Ronnie Mitchell's comments, I want to go on the record. I want this resolved ASAP. We cannot keep waiting for this or waiting for that. In the scheme of things, money is worth nothing. I don't have children in the school system anymore, but if I did, I would be up here beating on the door, and I would be talking to every person on this board. We are elected to do the very best we can for the citizens of this county, and it's high time that we came up with the money to fund this. We cannot keep just waiting, and, and Mr. Mitchell's correct. He's been talking about this since he's been elected. You have asked us twice. We still don't have it resolved. And to quote him, we've got fifty million dollars of taxpayer money tied up. If we can't come up with three hundred and sixty-six thousand right now to cover what's going to be due next year, and the additional money needed for these additional officers, none of us should be sitting on this board. We need to fix this ASAP. And I'm not going to talk about it anymore. I'm, I'm joining up with Mr. Mitchell down here at the end. It's ridiculous.
Go ahead.
Sheriff, thank you for offering to go through your staff and see what we have to try and cover the rest of the year. That, that means a lot. So, we have spring break next week, and then approximately a month and a half. If we could cover it, and I read the article and thought of us this week from what Henry County did, and that was a collaborative effort, the way I understand it. The board, the schools, and the sheriff's office coming together, pulling money, and taking money from jobs that had not been filled and using it to help fund it. I, I agree, we gotta, we need to have it, and it, you know, there's no one in here that wants to see a kid killed, or anyone killed. But I agree, we do have to do something about it. I appreciate you making the effort to try and cover it between now and then, and I, and I would support a meeting between us, the schools, and, and you all to try and resolve this. I think that's how it needs to go forward. If we could cover it for the rest of the remainder of the year and figure it out from there, I think that's how it should go. But I, I agree, they ought to be there tomorrow morning.
Laura?
Yes. Mr. Mitchell, thank you. You bring a passion, and appropriately so, to an issue that tears at our heartstrings, without question. I think about my, my little girl who's handicapped, and when she was in school, she was in a wheelchair. And what would have happened trying to protect the special needs kids with an active shooter? I, I too, I do not want to be part of when the fingers start getting pointed, that we were remiss in our roles. We do, as a bureaucracy, as people, as elected officials, working really hard to be as good, as good a stewards as we can with our taxpayers' money. And there are times that we need to be called upon, need to be kind of jerked out, if you will, of our, of our thinking about trying to save money, trying not to increase taxes and be those good stewards. There are times like these that we must stand up. And I admittedly have been trying to figure out how we can work the numbers, how we can make this work. And importantly, how can we share the financial burden of this between the schools, between the sheriff's department and the county? I think we do have, you know, a multifaceted effort here. And I think if we all pull together and we all work together, we can achieve this. However, I agree with my colleagues. There, in my estimation, is no time to, to waste on this. And I think that we can schedule meetings, we can do all of that. But for me, the bottom line is to meet the need starting tomorrow. And then, we have a well-articulated plan for August. And we're able, as a board, to know that we are going to be bought a proposal to vote on. We probably need to do it, I would say we could hope to have something together in May so that we can do our due diligence and understand as a board with our finance department, with Mr. Whitlow, the schools, and the sheriff's office, that this is going to get done and how it's going to get done. I don't, I think we're past the can we stage. Can we do this? We're at the, we must do this. And I think what I hear this board saying is, we're wasting no more time on this. We understand the limitations, Sheriff, of, you know, being able to put personnel in place, especially in this, in this era of, of all the workforce challenges that everybody's having. I get that. But I sense that you are tremendously committed to trying to get us through this school year. And I think that if we could begin recruitment immediately, knowing, and I understand that training is going to have to predicate some of these people that may come without that training. So, I think that we need to ensure that we are ready to go in August, and that we all roll our sleeves up and figure out how to make that happen. And this board may be put in a position where we have to demonstrate some courage to do that. But I've been very moved by Mr. Mitchell today, and I've been significantly moved by this video. And it, you know, it, it's caused me personally to step outside a little bit of checking the boxes on how we're spending our money and what's it for, and are we doing the best with it we can? This is the best we can do with our money. And so, Mr. Chairman, I really do support what this board is saying. I would just add that we need to work towards this in a measured way with deadlines and with staff working on the house, where the money is going to come from. I'd like to see analyses on the SRO grants, what it means in year one, two, three, and four, what the county matches are, so that when we talk with our partners at the schools and with the sheriff's office, that we can, in a meaningful way, make the determination that this will be funded and this is how it's going to be funded. So that this board can make a determination early on here. I, I would love to see something done in May, so that we're ready to pull the trigger in August to the best of our ability to, to get people in here. So, I thank you, and, and Justin, I thank you as well. You all have always been vigilant about this matter, and I appreciate your patience with us as we continue to try to do the very best we can across many domains. This is a significant priority, and it's getting closer and closer to home, geographically, if you will. So, I, I really appreciate my colleagues. And Ronnie, again, I thank you for, for bringing this to us with the passion and the commitment that you've continually demonstrated.
Mr. Cundiff?
I'm trying to assess something here. Mr. Mitchell gave a speech, a very passionate speech, and I appreciate it. I truly do. And I don't want you to think I got a cold heart, but we already had the motion on the floor. We passed the budget. Now, everybody's second guessing the budget now. So, I want to know what happened. Did we not pass the budget?
Yeah, we're not second guessing.
We're not second guessing the budget.
Well, what do you mean, we're not second guessing? Now, everybody wants to do something different.
No, the budget passed as, as it was presented.
That ain't exactly the way I see it. So, if Mr. Mitchell wants to put a motion back on the floor, let it rip.
We've still got some other people to have some comments. Mr. Carter, let me put back over here.
Sheriff, to cover us until school's out, are you going to need overtime money to pay these, these officers right now?
I certainly, I certainly will, yes. And I, I would like to make just a little bit of clarification on just where we are in, in trying to get through this process. I spoke to Mr. Whitlow this week. We had a great conversation about this issue and a couple others. As I'm looking, and, and, and don't get me wrong, I'm not here using the bully pulpit to, to, this is an issue that's every county's dealing with, every municipality's dealing with. We have lost five people in the last two months. Those were people just in the patrol division of our jurisdiction, not SROs, that we're looking to replace. I can stand here and tell you after, from exit interviews, young people. And we got to thank, young people today are different than when many of us were when we were working. But all of that was driven by pay. So, what I'm saying here, this is, this is a separate issue, but it's going to have to be dealt with. We are in a, a career battle in the region of trying to get the very best we can with very limited applications. We, we have a very aggressive recruitment campaign going on now. But what we're seeing coming in from those recruits is not at the level, especially when five exit in a two-month period. And I'm saying this because I'm grateful that, I hate the intensity of having to look at that tape, but from our perspective as law enforcement and the men and women who do this, gives the perspective, I believe, of understanding what they think they may have had to encounter during their career or on their job. And it's very difficult at times, when I've said this before, and I don't mean this begrudgingly to any government employee, but public safety and law enforcement is in a different arena than other government employees. It's the case in the federal government, it's the case in the state government. And when we're looking at adjusting pay to hire competent men and women to give of their self, of their lives possibly to do this work, we have to be competitive in the pay to recruit and get good people to do it. And it's getting less and less. Who wants to apply for a job when they see a video like this that we're asking them to do what they had, these officers had to encounter? I just put that out there because the challenge is for me, and the challenge is going to be for you, because you're the funding body that I have to come to for that funding in the, in the realm of what we're willing to pay the men and women to do this job. But I can guarantee you, we're going to do our very darnedest to do what we can to protect those schools. It is going to take extra money for us from overtime budget to do it.
What, what dollar ballpark, what dollar amount overtime money are we looking at to cover the schools until we can get this straightened out? Is it greater than fifty thousand dollars?
I, I wouldn't think so, or, I don't know. It, it very well easily could be. I mean, we're going to have to pull people that, you know, they work shift work to begin with. They cherish their weekends to be with their families when they get them. And with summer and our springtime coming on, of course, we've only got a couple months left. We've got April and May, so that's our focal point. Let's get through, and then I agree with Ms. Smith, that's regroup. Hopefully, at that time, we will understand how many of the, the grant, and if it's your choice to fulfill those, then we've got to get on, right on top of it as far as recruiting. But again, what we've seen from our recruiting efforts right now is not where the position I'd like to be in.
Well, I'll make this comment to my colleagues on the board. We have two million dollars in that budget stabilization fund. We certainly should be able to cover his overtime if we have to take money from somewhere out of that account until we can get this situation resolved. And, and here again, he's got to go out here and hire these additional officers, which could take all summer. You may not have enough by the time school starts next fall, do you think?
It, it will be very challenging for us to do that, yeah.
But if we don't start now?
Yes.
We're not going to be, we're going to not meet the challenge.
We, we've got to start this immediately, the time's past due.
One thing about law enforcement, and, and I appreciate all the comments that's been made, especially Ronnie Mitchell. Point very well made. My life has been dedicated serving the citizens of Franklin County, at least for the last almost thirty-eight years. And seeing, you know, these children that were And seeing, you know, these children that were murdered, senseless murder. And all the past shootings have gone on, on over the years. And, you know, and seeing this video really sat home because, you know, we've all trained that. I mean, we've been, Justin and I both are instructors to teach other officers how to respond just this way. We pray that we never have to. Thank God that those officers stepped up and were able to, to carry out their duty. Often on this side of the bench, we look at dollars and we look at, well, what does this person do? And how much can we afford to pay that position? A police officer, as well as our fire and EMS personnel, you do not pay these people for what they do. You pay them for what they may have to do. And that's often, and then you look at that and you say, what kind of price can you put on, on, on a life? And you can't put a price on a person's life. But with that said, what can we do? We need to make, to ensure that at the end of the day, that we, when we stand before God Almighty and give an account for our actions, that we can say we did the very best that we could possibly do. Now I know you've got limited manpower and that's not unique with, with your department, as, as you know. But.
I've got to tread very lightly because I fear for the ramification would be, because they've already been stretched pretty thin right now with what we're doing. I'm certainly going to meet with them. They understand, many of them have children themselves that are in a school. Many have wives that are teachers. But I'm afraid too, that we have to, when you push so much, there's so much you can do. And then all of a sudden, it's like, I can't do anymore, or it's not worth it. I'll go somewhere else.
That correct.
And I can make more money in doing it. And so, I mean, that's, that's what we're up against.
You're, you're exactly right. And, you know, as, as, as important as it is to have these officers there in these positions protecting our children, you also have to see these officers, how much of an importance is it to take them away from their own children at home in their home time? They have to have that. I mean, that, that's important. You know, I, I think that we've been kicking this can down the road. And, I mean, it's an uphill battle. As Lori said, we've got to start and we've got to start with a good solid plan and see it through. Some options, and I haven't forgot you Ronnie, I'll come to you. Some options that just come through my mind, that, things that we've looked at in the past, some funding options, the meals tax, cigarette tax. That's, you know, on the table as well, that would be ways of generating recurring revenue to help fund some of these positions. And of course, we have real estate and property taxes. I've spoken to a, a lot of people over the last couple of weeks, especially this past week, since the shooting, I've talked to a lot of people in the Farrow Henry area concerning. And, and they all have the same sentiments. They, they believe that, you know, they want to see officers in the school protecting the kids. But on the same sense, they don't want their taxes going up. So I think we need to really go back and look at some of these options. You know, like I said, the meals tax is on the table, the cigarette tax is on the table. We can look at some of our fees that we have in, in other areas, that, ways of generating. And that, that needs to all be in the conversation and part of the plan. And, and, you know, just, I mean, the, the table's wide open. We need to make sure that we leave no stone unturned. We need to look for our options. We owe that to the citizens, we owe that to the kids, and we owe it to ourselves. We need to do this right. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Chairman. There's six assigned to the elementary schools and they split shifts, right? So there's six. Then is it the Jero Center that doesn't have one at all?
Does not currently.
So there's, there's seven.
That was one of the eight would cover, the new eight would cover that, yeah.
So essentially the just did covers till the end of the school year. It's, the magic number's really seven because the eighth was an extra at the high school or middle school?
Correct, yes, that's correct.
So, I mean, can we look at officers that have retired in the last few years? Bring them back just to the end of school year? Can we, I mean, I don't want to be the person that sits up here and tries to tell you how to run your department. But can the captains, lieutenants, you know, all the admin that you have, put them out there? Let the investigators do their reports investigation while they're sitting at the school, something. And it needs to start tomorrow morning, Sheriff. We just cannot waste another day, not a single day. Promise me, I have fought for your department for three years. You can, you can't say that I haven't.
You have. And I will say this, I think I made it known when the Parkland, Florida shooting happened, I pulled people, I had them at that high school. We did not have the numbers we had over there. So yes, I, I understand this commitment and I'm committed to it as well.
Tomorrow morning, promise me so I don't have to worry about it anymore. Every school's covered tomorrow. And then we got next week to start planning. All right?
You, I want to uphold my promise to you here. I don't know that I could have all those schools covered in the morning. You got, here it is, this is kind of late in the day, the evening. But I'll give you that I'm going to do everything I can to get it as quickly as we can, yes.
Your officers are committed to this county. I know most of them. I think they'd be willing, let them know that it's going to happen. So let's, let's keep the momentum going.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion for some money, Mr. Chairman? So let's ballpark at 50 to 100. So I make a motion to take $100,000 out of the budget stabilization fund just to cover overtime till the end of the school year until we can get a good plan of action moving forward.
Before we do this, I'm going to ask our attorney, since this is not on the agenda, are we good to act on this? Okay, go ahead Ronnie.
I'll make a motion to take $100,000 out of the budget stabilization fund to give to the sheriff to fund overtime to cover, I think it's the next seven weeks of school. I think, got spring break next week, but I think it's seven, seven weeks near the end of May. If you need more money, come back, I'll make another motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to allocate $100,000 for the sheriff's office to cover overtime for the remainder of this school year for SROs in the schools. Any further discussion before we take a final vote? Go ahead Nick.
Say we allocate the $100,000 sheriff and, and we just can't find the people to work the overtime. But I understand that too.
We're just going to have to make assignments to cover them.
But if we're making assignments from people who are already working, do we need the extra $100,000? I guess my question. I, I want us to be careful here and not be just throwing money to the wind.
Well, if I'm assigning people to the schools, that's going to be your assignment, then I've got to bring people in that are off.
That's what you're saying, you'd still have to pull other people to cover there?
Yes, and I'm going to have to pay them overtime to come out and cover a patrol shift, cover court or whatever it may be, yeah.
Okay. But I would like, I would like staff and everything to just, let's just keep an eye on everything. And it's, I'm not knocking, I'm not knocking on the sheriff's office or anything, it's just, it's just business.
Absolutely. Mr. Cundas.
No, the only thing I'm saying is I hope the sheriff takes into consideration, Kristen Hertz's school. Because that's the county taxpayers too.
And, and I have a meeting tomorrow with the mayor. And this is going to be a priority topic that I'm going to have with him and see if we can get some cooperation with the town as well. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. There's no further discussion. Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call vote please?
Supervisor Tommy Cundas?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Laurie Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Thompson is absent for the vote.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I? I would like to offer a second motion if the board would entertain it. I would like to make a motion that the board directs staff to immediately begin working internally and with the sheriff's office and with the school, the school board and the school administration to begin crafting financial models to ensure that we have something to vote on by, by May at the latest. So that we can implement in August, with that in mind.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that we authorize staff to work with the sheriff's department and school division to come up with a plan for this board to take action on by May so that it can be implemented in August. Any discussion before we take a final vote? All right, you need a roll call or you need a voice vote?
A voice vote, a voice vote would be sufficient.
Okay, all in favor of this motion, let it be known I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Opposed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One more item.
Okay.
I'll try to keep it quick. I brought up the Callaway Rescue Squad earlier in my comments. From what I understand, the proposed budget had to cut and we approved that tonight. Correct, Mr. Carter? So we did cut their $17,500, I think is what it is. How do we go about putting that back in and getting public safety to assist the Callaway squad to see what they may need to continue covering calls? Because if we lose the volunteers, I mean, I mean, that leaves my whole district wide open with no EMS coverage. Which the public safety covers it, but they come from Farrow and Boones Mill and Rocky Mill.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to.
Please.
I, I would like to understand the methodology and with regard to the cut, why it was done? And the impact, what was the rationale and basis for that? And was it impacting other volunteer stations as well? Mr. Whitlow, and I don't want to put you or Ms., or Director Ferguson on the spot, or Mr. Carter. But I think that that's going to be information this board's going to require in order to make an informed decision.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Who wants to start?
Sounds like Director Ferguson's up. They got questions on how the decision was made.
Well, I mean, do you want to take the money from somewhere else to restore their budget?
I make a motion to give it back to them right now. Doesn't matter to me, but I wanted to give the board respect to talk about it and see why the decision was made.
Like Lori says, she wants to find out why. So Director Ferguson, if you might, coming up please.
I'll have to agree with Ms. Smith. I think we need to find out why they were cut. I think that needs to be known.
Sir, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As we were looking at the budget and, and the limited funds that we had several years ago, I believe, I, I don't have the paperwork for anything. 2021, I believe, was the squads that were running, the lesser number of calls was reduced to $7,500 from, I believe it was $24,000. And then the board generously awarded, they had some leftover monies and moved it up to 38, moved it up to 78.25 from the 7,500, which is about $375. So looking through the budget this year, Callaway Rescue Squad only answered 9.4% of their calls. They were dispatched out to 287 and responded to 27 of those with, with a unit. So looking at the funds that we had, Scruggs and Red Valley does an excellent job. They cover up in a high 80s and 90% of their calls. And they are only awarded, I believe it's $25,200 for covering all their calls. So we just, with, with that small percentage of calls being covered, we were just bringing them in the line with the other crews. And Mr. Mitchell said earlier that the stations that had paid crews, that we were giving them $7,800, which is correct. But the, the, the motive for giving them them, they're really cut back to $0. And that money is just kind of, in other words, like a lease or rental for upkeeping their building. For example, you know, at, at Glade Hill last night, we had a door go out. Well, Glade Hill Rescue Squad will pick that door up out of their funds. We don't, we don't pay it up. An HVAC unit went out at Farrow a while back and they picked that up. So effectively, the squads that had paid staff received zero funding. It goes, it's lease or rent for the building. And that was why Callaway was, was reduced basically to bring them in line with the other crews. It was cut a couple of years ago. Once, one particular squad was cut, I know 17,000 sounds like a lot, but one squad was cut from 39,000 down to 7,500. Again, it's because they weren't covering their calls. I think it's important to bring out, is we talk about money to operate, is there's lots of, lots of other ancillary stuff that goes into that. You know, the county already pays for fuel, pays the apparatus, pays the utilities. And I think it's, in a, in a conversation yesterday with, with some folks, the, the comment was made about, well, you know, we need this bill, some of this money to help with the building. And, and I think the board has traditionally been very cautious in spending money for facilities that weren't county owned. So again, that rolls over to, to why the cuts were made.
Director Ferguson, I, I didn't hear, could you repeat how many calls they had and they only answered 27?
287 were dispatched to their agency.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions from Director Ferguson?
So they were not aware of this, when did they become aware of this?
I got the phone call, which I'm disappointed myself, I didn't catch it early on. I got the phone call last week.
So Director Ferguson, how do you go about talking with the individual stations about something like this?
Well, I apologize, I got to move over. I can't look through that glass to look at you there. So, you, you know, it was an oversight on, on our staff at public safety for not giving Captain Deacon a call to discuss it with her. She did find out, she told me from a third party, I don't, I don't know who that third party is. It's not even, you know, important to who it was. But that was an oversight on our part.
So instead, can I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
Instead of just cutting the funding, let's get with them and assist them in trying to figure out what we can do to assist them to try to get them back up and running again. You know, they still entered 10%, so it's not like they're just not entering calls like Farrow and Franklin County Rescue Squad and Fork Mountain, right? Because they just, it's completely zero there, right?
At, at Farrow, at Farrow, Rocky Mount still runs a crash truck.
Crash truck.
At Farrow and, Farrow and Fork Mountain, that is right. Farrow, not Farrow, Fork Mountain will come out sometimes just driving a car to the scene and help you. And, and I will say that we offered some suggestions and talked to Mr. Captain Deacon yesterday that she was concerned about recruitment and retention. We brought her attention that there's about $34,000 in the recruitment and retention fund that we typically assist agencies with. And we told her if she had a major thing, come in, we would, we would work with her on that right there. But that was her main concern.
So could we use the 17,000 out of that recruitment retention fund? Because it sounds like we need to try to retain some volunteers.
Well, if we use 34,000, we could certainly do that, that'd be to pleasure the board. But it would eliminate some other things that we've been able to do, like the appreciation day that's had, some of the fire weeks we have, that we'll buy trinkets and stuff for fire departments to go out with, some appreciation day, we give away t-shirts, stuff like that. So we can certainly transfer that money over, but it just reduces what's out there for the other agencies to be used for recruitment and retention.
Director, may I, Ronnie?
Absolutely, please.
Director Ferguson, when you had those conversations, the loss of 17,000 and finding out about it after the fact is what it is. In your conversations, is there something that's going to be compromised or consequences to the reduction of $17,000 that will be meaningful to them in the coming budget term?
I think in speaking to Captain Deacon, her main concern was, was there was, I want to say items that they, she had to recruit and retain some folks that it limited her budget to do that right there. And that was when we offered up, well, we've got this money in recruitment and retention. You know, if you want to have a, a recruitment event, and I think of Glade Hill Volunteer Fire Department, once a year in August, they have a community day down at Glade Hill School. And they come to us and, and we put some money into that. So we had, we had that conversation. That was the, the two things that Captain Deacon mentioned was the recruitment and retention and the upkeep of the building was the two things that she mentioned.
So have they applied for the grant?
My understanding is that on the, you talking about the $50,000 grant? My understanding was no, that the only EMS agency applied for that was Red Valley.
Is that an option?
It certainly was. And they were notified on that along with the other agencies. And in talking to Chairman Ledbetter, I believe it was Monday of this week, he said the only one had applied from the EMS side was the Red Valley Rescue Squad.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
To that point, Ms. Smith, they just found out a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
You know, the.
I hear you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would love to see my.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would love to see my volunteer squad in Callaway get the assistance from the county staff they need to try to figure out how they can get the momentum going again and get the squad back up and running the way, and there's a couple members actually here, they're committed, but, you know, it was only twenty-seven calls, that was twenty-seven calls paid staff didn't have to answer to. So, you know, it, every little bit helps, you know, seventeen thousand dollars, but, you know, talking about Snow Creek and, um, you know, might as well plan to spend the money in Callaway next year if that's how it's going to be, so...
Well, and the only caution that I would, you know, interject for the board at this point, keep in mind that we are in a process, um, making decisions in public safety, we've had a few work sessions, we're continuing to dig down and understand, um, how we can be better and do better in public safety, and that is ongoing. We got an update in our Friday packet, I think a week ago or so, about what, what, from Director Ferguson. So keep in mind that this is a work in progress across the county with more than just one or two stations. I understand exactly, Mr. Mitchell, the concern. I think hearing that secondhand is just, I understand it's an oversight, mistakes happen, it's a tough pill to swallow, I get it, but I, I just want to caution the board, be careful we don't continue doing what we've done in the past at times, which is working on some of these things in isolation, when we're already trying to look at it comprehensively countywide and make sure we're being fair and equitable, and that we're going to be working from criteria, not just arbitrary, we think we should do this. That would be the only suggestion I would have.
And may I also add that I let Ms. Deacon know that, that the volunteer squads that are actually running calls still get a portion of the billing revenue. Uh, Scruggs, Red Valley gets that, and as their call volume goes up, with twenty-seven calls, it's not a lot of money, I believe it was like a couple hundred bucks, but as their calls, they're able to cover their calls, they'll have more money coming in from that funding stream also.
Got you, thank you, Director Ferguson.
Thank you.
Our next meeting, Mr. Whitlow, we have that work session, I think we have some time that we, we're going to discuss some public safety.
I think we're looking at the May meeting, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and certainly now, understanding with the May meeting also, the SRO discussion.
Yeah, before the next time we get together, staff get with Callaway Squad, let's, let's see what's going on here, let's, instead of just, you know, being done with it, let's try to make it work.
They need more than just money, we, I mean, we need to find out what they need as, as far as support, uh, from us, and, and, I mean, they're part of our community.
Well, we've got, we've got Mr. Mitchell's, you know, we've got Snow Creek, he's been, you know, passionately advocating for, so we've got work to do, there's no question about that, gentlemen, we've got work to do, um, we've just, we've got to have a process in place so that we do it the right way, and we do it equitably.
Does the board want to entertain putting the money in tonight, or does the board want to talk about it at our next meeting?
Let's, let's bring it back for the next meeting, so...
The work session in May.
Because I need to tell those Callaway Squad, and I'll talk to them after the meeting, so they can go back and tell the rest of the membership, hey, we're going to talk about it next meeting we get together.
And if some of them want to present or, you know, say something in regard to this, they'll have time to prepare and be ready, and, because we want to hear from them, uh, if they have a need, we want to meet it.
Yes, please.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think we should all remember that, you know, sometimes it's not always about money when it comes to rallying volunteers, or when it comes to retaining employees, whether it's in, whether it's public safety, sheriff's office, or anywhere else, there's, there's, there's a pile of reasons that people come and go, and we can throw money at everything all the live long day, but I think we got to look at other, other things that might be driving people to leave or people to not come to volunteer, and, and we can't just say it's the money.
Yeah.
We, we throw all the money in the world and it might not make a difference.
And we need to look at all of our options, and that will be for the May meeting, so, uh, for those of you here from Callaway, uh, that will be on our agenda for May, uh, for a work session with public safety, and that gives you some time, if any of you want to come in and, and address the board, we'd like to hear from you. Okay, anybody else have anything?
I'm stressed out.
Well, let me congratulate the board and staff on passing a new budget. I think it was a solid budget, I know y'all put a lot of hours into it, and I just want to say thank you for the hard work, uh, for all of the staff, county staff, and, uh, and thank you for the, to the board for your time and that we've gone into this. And with that said, we will be adjourned until Tuesday, April the eighteenth at one thirty for the regular board supervisors meeting.